Well, it is that time. I call this Monday, September 23 regular meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. And as is our custom, we have a short period of time at the beginning of each meeting for people who may want to speak on any matter except items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record has already closed. I don't have any green slips and I'm guessing, looking at the audience, there may not be anyone wishing to speak on anything today. So seeing none, we will move ahead. And today, we are continuing our deliberations on the appeal of the hearings official decision of the Benson Zone Change Z-13-2. And I'd like to just recap and kind of summarize what we did last time and outline kind of a suggested plan of attack today on this. To summarize, on September 16, we voted seven to zero to affirm the hearings official's decision with respect to subassignment of Error 1A, that the property was properly designated medium-density residential in the Metro Plan. And I believe, as outlined by staff also, that since the Metro Plan controls in the event of inconsistencies with the refinement plan, in this instance, the WAP, subassignment of Error 2A, also affirms the refinement plan designation for the property as medium-density residential. And as staff had outlined also, that the issues under Subassignment 3 that relate to the low-density designation are also resolved under that action. Next, that will bring us to whether or not the hearings official erred in not providing further findings in regard to site review, which will be Metro Plan Policies A-13 and A-23, and the WAP, the Willaquenzi Area Plan, specifically Policy 8 and Proposed Action 8.1 related to site review. The other things we also need to address today, and we do need to wrap this up today, will be Harlow Subarea Policy 4, WAP Residential Policy 1, and WAP Land Use Policies 3 and 6. So with that, I'd like to start our discussion today with addressing the site review issue. Who would like to start?
Does staff have anything?
Oh, yeah, I guess does staff want to make a presentation? I'm sorry. I just jumped, I just jumped right in and is that okay? And I know we all received the AIS with staff's summary. Commissioner Jaworski?
Yes, since no one else wanted to start. I looked at this with some detail, at least detail for me, and let me say that I'll begin by page two of the AIS that we received. And under the upper portion where it talks about site review, if you look at the first paragraph or two, I think there's sort of six issues there. There's the one that talks about prior legal precedents, one about multifamily standards are sufficient to fulfill the policy, adoption of the multifamily standards, 9.5500, fulfilled the obligation by the council, the quasi-judicial process does not, is not a proper venue to address a prior legislative discussion, insufficient policy basis, and zone change be subject to site plan review. In looking at those, and I may not do this in the best order, but let's just say, when I looked at these, the prior legal precedent that was cited, what I found is that the two or three sites so referenced, which weren't clear here, basically were medium-density zoned areas already. They were surrounded, if you look at the, what would be known as the Bascom Site, if you look at that particular site, it's surrounded north and south by medium density. To the east, it's, there's a road and then there's some commercial and agriculture. And to the left, there are only three sites that are R1, three small house lots. So when you look at the peripheral of that particular site, over ninety-some percentage of it is not bounded by anything R1. When you look at the other two sites referenced, on all sides, they are bounded by medium-density residential. And across the street, actually, there's an annexed area that's not in the city limits and what would be spectrum, which is 117 units going in. So I feel that in that one issue, that the council, the hearing official erred by saying and utilizing that as a comparison by prior precedent, because in this particular site that we're looking at, on all four sides, it's bounded by R1. Significant difference, and it's comparing apples and oranges to me, and I don't think it was appropriate. Number two, in looking at the apple and oranges issues, he talks about the multifamily standards being sufficient to fulfill the policy and also rather than the site review. Well, when you take a look at the multi, when you take a look at the site review, which is 9.8425, it talks about harmonious development and all those types of things that are represented in the policy of the WAP. When you take a look at multifamily standards, the purpose is pretty much never even specifically state that, although there are like eight or nine of them, they're more about standards, housings, how it will be built, how the buildings will look, whatever. Additionally, if you look at the site review, it considers several other things, such as natural features, protection, tree preservation, how you'll handle pedestrian, bike, transit, takes a look at stormwater, and it goes on to list other, other things that it should be looked at. To say that these one replaces the other, to me, makes no sense. They're two totally different things. And to further clarify that, if you look under site review and you go to needed housing, which is the 8.445, in addition to all these things, the needed housing is supposed to be a quicker way to go through it, less rigorous. It includes some fifteen other areas that you still have to look at, and one of them says, "For a proposal for multifamily development, it must comply with multifamily standards." So if they're the same, why didn't it just reference multifamily standards and none of the others? They're nowhere near the same. One can't replace the other, in my opinion. I think they're two totally different things. And I think, again, the hearing official erred when he said, "One replaces the other and it's sufficient." It is not sufficient. They are two totally different things. If you take a look at the Eugene Code, 9.4400 and 9.4410, in the first, it says, "The purpose of the site review overlay is to improve in character integrity and harmonious development of the area." The words, "harmonious development," they're cited in the WAP, they're never mentioned in site review. Additionally, under 4410, it states, second line, "In addition, the site review overlay zone may be required by refinement plan." Now, one of the things that really gets me in everything that we've been doing is the intention, you know? And when I read this, and being from a neighborhood, I have a problem because it says, you know, the intention of the people who wrote the WAP, when they specifically said, "This is what you can do," seems to me that was an intention to fulfill the policy. To state that it's an action item and therefore not adopted, to me, sounds ridiculous. Although that may be something that's stated in there, that pretty much renders all area plans sort of useless because policies in themselves are vague and general. Yet, when we always look at it, it says, "The Metro Plan Policies will rule, except if more specific in the WAP." Well, how can it be more specific in the WAP if they don't allow the specific to be included? So I'm kind of confused with that whole thing, and I'm sort of bothered by that. Additionally, the last two items, when it says the quasi-judicial process is not a proper venue to address prior legislative discussion, to me, that and the fact that he said, said that they did this and they fulfilled this, I've looked back at what they adopted. Nowhere did the city council say, "We're adopting the multifamily plans to replace the site review or to be sufficient regulation policy in lieu of the site review." It's not even mentioned. So I don't understand how the hearings official could interpret that as being their intent. When we looked at other issues in here related to zoning of low-density or moderate, the intent was clear. They said, "We're doing this to that site and not that site." That's very unclear, so I think hearings official stretched it when he said he thought that that was the intent of what the legislative process did. Additionally, he also said, "Zone changes, zone changes are not subject to site plan review." Well, that may be true, but the area that we're looking at here is not a zone change. A zone change from R1 to medium, a zone change to commercial, that may not be subject to site review. But in this specific case, we're talking about a medium, a medium-density surrounded by R1s, which is specifically referenced in other areas. So I think that not the zone change is subject, but the effect of the zone change implies a site review overlay. So I think from that, and I could get into other things, and I'll let other people talk here, the other commissioners, but I'm leaning in the direction that we definitely say that the site review overlay should be part of this approval process. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jaworski. I have myself in the queue and, okay. And then, I guess, as I was looking through this too, specifically with the WAP policies, I tried to get to what the terminology meant in the, in the plan. And what, what I saw is, is pretty specific where it talks about policies and proposed actions. And so Policy 8 is specifically listed and, and it says that policies are statements that suggest a specific course of action that will move the plan toward attainment of its goals. And it talks about policies being the whole number, and then the proposed actions being the point 1, point 2 related to that. And it specifically says that proposed actions are recognized but not adopted by the city council as possible ways to carry out policies. And I guess where I struggled with that and site review is when that would actually take effect or how it could take effect. And is that just the multifamily standards or is that, you know, the application of site review? And I guess, I felt, as Commissioner Jaworski does, that it, it kind of felt like it was pretty clear in that particular policy, 8.1, to apply site review suffix to all parcels designated medium or high-density residential land use, which directly about low-density residential land uses. And so whether or not that gets included at some point, I guess, when does it get included? And it seems to me that if we're going for that actual zone change to bring it into conformance with the plan diagram, that that seems an appropriate time to me to apply that suffix and give that additional measure of protection that I think they were looking for in that proposed action. So I kind of lean toward, you know, suggesting site review as an overlay as part of this specifically because of that. But that's, I still, like I say, I still struggle with when and how that all gets applied because if the multifamily standards take care of it, I think Commissioner Jaworski has a good point, that I think those are two slightly different things there. So that's my, my take on it. So I have, sorry. Next is Commissioner Mills, then Commissioner Baker.
This is going to be the third round of a continuing theme on this. As I read the AIS, I guess I was questioning, and I'm looking for some input from staff and council. On the final paragraph, page one, says, "Further proposed action was never taken by the city. I A, it never applied the site review suffix to medium and high-density residential lands abutting low-density property." So as I read this, "It was recognized by the city council but never authorized." I think I've got adopted, excuse me, "never adopted." And I guess where I'm curious is, I'm, I'd like some input from staff on this because I'm, I'm also trying to read intent here. By not adopting, was city council expressing an intent, an intent to block it? Or was it just a miss? Because it's very clear that up until that point, the intent, both of, I believe, the planning commission and the citizens that were working on WAP was, the intent was that site review would apply.
We don't have, unlike the question you dealt with last week, we decided it was easy to discern from the record as W A N D R. We don't have a clear explanation of the city council's intent as to why the application of site review is left as a proposed action and not adopted.
What I would add is, based on my recollection, there was not a legislative action that considered application of site review on a broad scale. And so in practice, staff has typically looked at this policy in the context of individual zone change applications once they come forward.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
And I think, next, and I think, I wanted to see how the city council had taped used site review in the past. I think this would be applicable in the record.
And Commissioner Baker, if you could, let's get, if we could all get our mics right.
Right, yeah. So I reviewed all the ordinances passed by the city councils since 1980 through 2007. I don't know if you can see all these.
Well, it's ordinances.
Sure you're okay?
Yeah. I was just questioning whether there was anything in there that was outside the record. If it's, if those are all ordinances of the city, then probably just to make it clear, probably want to go ahead and take a vote whether you want to take official notice of those as a body.
Okay. Do we want to take official notice of Commissioner Baker's city council ordinances as a body?
Well, they're not mine, they're from, from the city.
From city, city council. Discussion maybe before we do that? Commissioner Belcher?
I think they normally would be accepted, so I think they should be accepted here.
Okay.
Concur.
Okay. So all those in favor of receive, oh, yes, Commissioner Duncan?
I guess I'm a little concerned suggesting I can agree with that without knowing why I would agree with it ahead of time, without knowing what's going to be talked about, particularly since I haven't done that in view myself.
I'm struggling with it myself because in general, when you take official notice of something, you're not considering it for evidentiary purposes. You're considering it for its legal matter. So it seems like possibly what you would be considering is worse. Why don't you?
You want me to just describe?
Why don't you explain what you're going to do and then, then you guys can make the role.
And I wasn't trying to make this quantitative, but I went through and cited all the cases where the city council, which is, usually makes decisions on this unless it's a quasi-judicial, comes to us. And, and all the blue tabs are where they applied site review, you know, in ordinances that related to zoning. Okay? I mean, there are lots of other ordinances. Most of the ordinances here are not related to land use, but the ones, I could search for the word zoning and I could look for all the cases where they did a slash SR. And they almost always do it on a zone change. In other words, the change occurs when they change the zone, which is what, which reinforces what, what the staff has said. What happens is, the SR is applied when they, when, when someone applies for a zone change and then they, then it's applied at that point. In other words, you don't find it in the record here applied, at least to the title of the ordinance.
Okay.
You know, because I didn't search the bodies of all the ordinances, but the titles, you can see it says, "Zone, zoning change from blah blah to slash SR."
So, and is that, is that something we can even consider? And I know Commissioner Duncan has, I think, a follow-up, and then Commissioner Jaworski, then Commissioner Borowski, I think, was next.
Did you want to ask, did you want to ask a question?
Well, my question, I think, is, and because I've been around enough of these cases, I have concerns about how we do certain things. I think he just testified to what he wanted to testify before we voted on it.
Well, yeah, and I, that can be remedied, that can be remedied by, by not considering that. So did you have another question about the?
I didn't have a question at all. I don't, I don't even think it has to be voted on to bring into. When the hearings official cites that zone changes are not subject to site review, to me, that opens us to talk about it because he opened it up in his decision. So I don't even see that we have to enter.
If it's evidence, you can't, it doesn't matter what.
Well, he must have based it on some evidence, so I haven't seen that.
Something in the record.
If it's evidence, you can't take in that new evidence at this point. If it's not evidence, then you can take official notice of it. So we're just trying to figure out what the purpose of.
So what evidence did he use? It's not cited.
Whatever.
So if he used an interpretation, we're looking at this as an interpretation.
Yeah, I think the evidence that he looked at was the two hearings officer decisions that are in the record. I think that's what the hearings officer relied on. So, did you have a question?
No, I was gonna, I think, but I think, Steve, did you want to jump in?
Just to maybe help the conversation, I think what you're wrestling with now really isn't a key factor in where you're trying to go. No matter which way you land on the question of site review or no site review, it's not going to be really, I think, the critical factor. You've heard Gabe already mention that for the Willaquenzi Area Plan, it wasn't applied on a broad basis and that historically, the zone changes have been used to, to deal with that question. That's just kind of a foundation to work from, and I think what's more important is to really look at the policies and whether or not there's sufficient basis to require it in this case. And I, and so while we could have this discussion from a legal standpoint, I think it's, content is going to be of, of little value to the end. I would just, you not consider it and move past it because why take the chance?
I guess that was my, my thought is, can we get to a decision on site review maybe without that information? And I guess I personally think we can.
I would agree.
I was in the queue still, right?
Pardon me?
Am I still in the queue?
Actually, I think, I haven't had a chance to write down. Okay, John, go ahead and finish.
I'd like to finish what I started earlier because it wasn't referenced. In WAP, page 28, there is another policy, Policy Number 2, and it says, "Regarding medium-density residential development on the east side of Coburg Road, Tandy and Bailey." It again talks about between low-density and medium-density. In addition to Policy 8, it references the visual character, also talks about traffic conflicts as a policy. You can address traffic conflicts through multipurpose on the streets there. You have to do it through site review that looks at nine criteria of, looking at that. And in addition, just to show the intent, Sub-Policy 2.1, the city should apply site review suffix to all parcels designated medium-density.
Okay.
And it's the same thing again. I'm just reiterating that they said it twice.
Okay. Point of order.
Excuse me, John, but Mr. Jaworski, I'm sorry. It seems like we have a question on the table that we need to resolve before we go on.
I thought.
Yeah. Let's, our, let's go ahead and.
Can I have a question about that?
Okay. Commissioner Borowski, and then Commissioner Belcher, did you have a comment on the issue on the table? Yeah. Let's, let's limit our discussion to the issue on the table.
Right. And, and my question is about the taking public notice. And, and in my view, all due respect to Commissioner Baker, it looks like he did a lot of research and put a lot of blue tabs on it, but until, you know, I can take your word for it, but I can't, I don't have the time to go through and substantiate that that's, the conclusions that you draw were the same conclusions that I would draw. So I would, I would vote against taking public notice of it for that reason. I think there's plenty of, plenty of meat to chew on here to get to the decision without that. I appreciate your work on this, but again, I would hate to have us do something here that would jeopardize this decision at a further level when it may not be necessary to do that. And so that's why I would lean against not taking.
Okay. Commissioner Belcher?
When I made my comment earlier, I said we had taken notice of ordinances in the past, but we took notice of them by specific number. And you're sort of saying, I hold in my hand a list of names, or a list of ordinances, and I want you to let me testify about them without taking notice of them each specifically. And I've heard what you said, and I think we don't need to go down this path. So I would say, I would vote no as well.
Can we get also get clear on the verbal testimony?
Okay. So then, the motion on the table is whether or not to take official notice of what Commissioner Baker is recommending and, or not. And I'll do this in two parts. So we'll do that. First part, do we wish to take official notice? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Then the second part would be then to disregard.
I would just make clear that there may have been.
Just make it clear that there may have been some new testimony and that, that, no offense to Commissioner Baker, that we will not consider that in our decision.
And I think he still has the floor there.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I never expected you to take notice. And what I assumed would happen is because ordinances are part of the adopted laws for Eugene, they're automatically applicable. So if I wanted to submit a PDF file off the, the city website that had the list of the ordinances, just like I looked at, that, that could be, you know, considered. So I didn't ever, ever expect you to consider what I had done is, you know. But, but anyone could look through this, you know, a PDF file, and it's easier for me to provide it to you rather than having you search and generally yourself. And it seems to me that we have to get to a point where we are willing to accept, you know, legal documents that the city has adopted as part of things that we can look at in these regards, you know, whether they were officially dumped into the record previously, you know, during the hearings, public hearings for it. It just seems that we have this expectation that codes and, and ordinances that pass those are part of the record of anything that we consider because they're part of city law. I mean, you know, so we certainly wouldn't want to be in a position where we, because of the hearings record, we voted against some law that the city had passed that we didn't, weren't aware of at the time. It just seems foolish.
Okay. I understand. Commissioner Belcher, you were next in the queue.
I think I, I say earlier.
Okay. And I guess I had myself in the queue also, and then.
Oh, and let me say, in this regard, I'm fine with completely removing it, but I do think we need to make certain that we are aware that these are legal documents that should be, you could, should be able to look at them at any time because they are part of the legal code adopted by the city of Eugene.
I have myself in the.
We don't have the zoning code included in the record, but yet we can refer to it at any period of time.
Okay. I understand. What I, my comment was going to be related to the site-specific site review. And I think in, in looking at what I've seen in both the Metro Plan Policies as well as the Willaquenzi Area Plan, I believe.
I think we still have to resolve this one.
Well, I can, I can accept that you'll remove it from the record.
Yeah. Okay. That the, okay. In the Willaquenzi Area Plan, that that gives that ability to do a site-specific site review as things progress, which is part of that proposed action. And I think there's, at least in my opinion, I think there's enough in the Willaquenzi Area Plan to give us the ability to do that with the zone change, just as staff had originally recommended. And that, I just wanted to reiterate that that was kind of my position as I looked through these policies and proposed actions before these deliberations. So, okay. Commissioner Borowski?
You know, my, my feelings on this are a little bit mixed because of the deliberations we had the other day and the ones that we're going for here. You know, the deliberations we had the other day, I made my decision on something that was recommended from council saying, "Use legislative history to as your, as your backup." And, and that's kind of how I came to my decision on the first findings. Now, in this one, we're kind of asked the same thing, but it's, it's a little bit less clear, although to me, Action 8, Proposed Action 8.1 is actually more clear than what I, what I, the conclusion that I jumped to the last time. Although by reading the city attorney's memo, it kind of goes the other way. It's like, don't, you know, don't look at it this time, look at it that time. And I guess, for me, what I, what I would hope is that, that this is a clear decision so that the parties interested can, can put. decision so that the parties interested can, can put this to bed. You know, I would, in my, in my feeling, I would hate to have this go to more, to more levels of, of appeals. You know, I'd hate to have it go to Luba and then possibly even further than that because of a finding that we see. And so I'm, I'm very conflicted about it, you know. I, I would really, I know that a lot has been invested in this on both sides. And, you know, I'm not saying that that's going to jut, you know, push my decision. But yet, by reading the city attorney's memo, it's like, you know, if you go this way, chances are it's going to go a couple more ways. So again, do I rely on the city attorney or do I look at this, what I feel is a pretty, pretty clear statement in 8.1, and, and let it go that way so that in the future, we have this, this clarity? Because it seems to me, we don't have clarity on, on the proposed. Again, kind of like Commissioner Jaworski was saying, if not now, when does 8.1 get applied? You know, and so do we use this as our test case to say, yes, we want 8.1 to apply? Because this particular parcel meets every criteria that 8.1 was written about. If there, if it's written and we can't use it, why write it? So I'm, I'm a little conflicted and I'm looking forward to hearing more from other commissioners and staff about how we get to that point.
Okay. I have Commissioner Belcher, then Duncan, then Baker.
Okay, I'm kind of torn on this one too, but I did come to a final position, I do believe. First of all, staff supported the site review in the original presentation before the hearings official. I am impressed by Commissioner Jaworski's explanation of the differences between site review and all the other standards that might apply. However, in reading site review, I only see one potentially useful clause in 9.844 that might apply here, and that is making sure that the buildings are reasonably compatible with surrounding properties, which is the issue at hand, I think, for the neighbors. So therefore, I support it there as well. And, and two, we have policies that protect low-density residential from increased density along major transit corridors. I feel like this is, needs to be in place. That may change when that happens. However, not all of the medium-density rezones in the, the area covered by Willaquenzi area plan may be upon major transit corridors. So I still think that's important. And finally, I'm concerned about the precedent we would set if we didn't apply site review here for future properties in the Willaquenzi area plan. Would this make that policy essentially moot? So those are the reasons why I would support the idea of applying site review here. And as an aside, I think we need to have conversations in the future, not during this deliberation, about the issues of what role do ordinances take in our deliberations. But that's not for today, but I would like to have that later. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan?
I think clarity will be from council on, on the memo that we got dated September 19th, 2013. As I read through this, I was under the impression that you were trying to give us sort of, that site review was important if we actually had a development plan where allowing it or placing it on a property with just a zone change going on without any planned development are different in your mind? Am I reading wrong on that?
Well, there, there are, there are two different places. There's opposing the site review overlay and then there's applying the site review. So those are two different instances.
So you're suggesting in here that it's a site review overlay?
I think that's what, I mean, is that the staff on this?
Yeah, I, I believe the discussion's centered around applying the site review overlay in this case. We don't have a site review application that's concurrent with the zone change. And so I think that's the distinction you're looking for.
Yes, but we, to me, the term overlay typically is done in an area, not site specific.
In the case of an individual property being rezoned, the question is whether the policy would provide support for that in this one instance. I mean, it could be applied in theory more broadly, but in this case, it's a single parcel, a single zone change.
So just, just to clarify, because it seemed like there were a couple of questions that were on this topic. The ability to apply the suffix, the site review suffix as part of a zone change is nothing new. And it's, is mechanically the way to do that. The question really is whether you have a policy basis to support it here. So if there's some of you that are questioning, is this the right tool? Can we actually mechanically do this during a zone change? That's really not the issue. You can. It's really, do you have the policy basis to back it up? And that's really what, what the city attorney's memo was about, was saying there's some risk with that. And you're having that discussion around the policy basis is, I think, the more fruitful part of what, what you need to wrestle with. Do you feel you have enough strength in the adopted plan basically to back up the imposition of site review through the zone change?
Following that up, in reading the Willaquenzi area plan, I, I found some issues in it that gave me, that I feel there's some conflict in the document. At the end of last week's meeting, I was, I felt that site review was the way to go. But there's some comments in the general plan, excuse me, the general policies on page 15, that says, "Site review procedures and special development standards shall be considered for properties which abut or face each other when those uses, when the uses permitted on those properties are potentially incompatible." I don't find multi- and single-family to be incompatible because it's always been part of the process that that's the buffer between low-density and commercial. And then it goes on and says, minimize land use conflicts by promoting compatibility between low-density and higher-density residential land uses, as well as between residential and non-residential. I don't, I'm not sure that I believe that site review actually handles that. I think because of what Mr. Belcher referred, or Commissioner Belcher referred to. But further, if I go to page 28, and here's some of my other conflicts, is when we talked about the Harlow subarea, there's a continual discussion in here referring to areas between Tanny Turn, Bailey Lane, and between Atkins Street and Elysium Avenue. But there's a complete absence in here talking south of Tanny Turn because Tanny Turn is to the north of the subject property. And I, I found it interesting that there was this compatibility discussion and the need for site review, but then it's just, it appears to me it's almost completely absent in this area, at least the way I'm reading this. Policy one refers to Coburg Road between Tanny and Bailey Hill. Two talks about it that way. And it refers to site review, the city shall apply a site review suffix to all parcels designated medium-density residential on the east side of Coburg Road, between Tanny Turn and Bailey Lane, and between Atkins Street and Elysium. And again, Tanny Turn is that area north of where the subject property is. But then later, it goes on and says, "The city shall encourage site development practices to promote compatibility between medium-density and low-density residential uses." And there it says should. And so I don't find this document as clear-cut with regard to the subject property because it seems to be south of the borders that the subarea talks about all the time. So I, when I read that, I kind of moved off of feeling that site review was the way to do it because I'm not sure that it was intended by this document to be applied on areas south of Tanny Turn, based on this comments. So I don't know that I'm there yet.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
I had a number of comments. I'm going to go back and throw out one just because I, I just feel it needs to be said. When we talk about legislative history, from my point of view, deliberations of the planning commission are not really part of legislative history. All we do is make recommendations. We just pass that on to the city. If we had deliberations of the city, that would, from my point of view, that would be considered as legislative history. What we're doing when we review planning commission hearings or notes is we're, we're getting background material and information about the process. But the legislative history is really what the city council decides. We didn't make a decision on this. We make, we only make recommendations. Now, this wasn't a quasi-digital case when we made these recommendations to the city. They were just recommendations on adoption of whatever, the changes to the metropolitan area plan and the adoption of the West, the Willaquenzi refinement plan. So again, and we have like a year period between when this stuff was, you know, this stuff was proposed and then it was finally adopted by the city. We have no idea what was going on in the city council's heads because we, for whatever reason, we don't have a record. We don't have recording or whatever. So we really don't have, and then now I'm going to skip back to the, when I looked at the, when I look, look at the, the refinement plan, and I look at page 16, I see that it says, "Apply site review to all parcels designated medium or high-density land use which directly abut low-density residential land uses." And I have to disagree with Commissioner Duncan. Compatibility between R1 and R2, we had a infill compatibility task force for three years that tried to develop standards to make certain that future developments where there was one, one zone designation next to another were compatible because the code themselves doesn't guarantee that. That's just the nature of what we have. And we know that. We know have, we have a problem with transitions. And so you can't really say that R1 is compatible with R2. We have very different height allowances, density allowances. We got, also, we have a design pattern where, you know, in single-family residential, you expect the house to be at the front, backyard to be the back, that would be private. And we don't have the same thing in multifamily. Multifamily, at least the way it's been implemented recently, tends to fill out the entire lot and prop, you know, those properties look over whatever is adjacent, which could be somebody's backyard. So I don't feel that R1 and R2 are compatible. That's, that's why we've spent all this time developing and implementing infill compatibility standards. So, and when we get to the, the area Harlow policies and proposed actions, it, you know, it mentions site review for specific areas, but then it goes on to say, on the following page, page 30, that the city shall encourage site development which promotes compatibility between medium-density and low-density uses and considers the aesthetic impacts on the Coburg Road entrance corridor. Number four, you know, it actually mentions specific parcels here that were part of the rezone. Again, you've got to realize that this was developed one year before the metro plan was changed and amended. So we, we have no idea what's going on in terms of minor details about south or north of Tanny Turn because we're looking at a record that was, was a draft one year before they made some decisions about rezoning along, you know, along Coburg. So we can't really say that this is what was going through the city council's minds when they did some zone changes a year later. And this probably would be reflected in what was going on at the time a year before, which may have been before zone changes were proposed in that area. Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, two things. First, in looking at page 15 and number five, I sort of agree, I agree with Commissioner Baker. My last two or so years on this have been dealing with conflicting land uses between R2 and R1. That's all we've been talking about. And they are incompatible rather than just potentially incompatible. So I think that definitely applies. In a general sense, all I wanted to say was, I think there's enough policy basis to support a site review overlay being applied. I also think it should be applied, if not to be challenged or not challenged, because we have staff indicating they are applying it, looking at zoning. And, and I would think that they're doing the right thing. And this may be a way to force the issue to bring forward. We think it's the right thing. If someone says it isn't, then maybe it'll be changed to be the right thing. So I see it, a way of supporting it just for to get clarity on that.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you. I guess I just wanted to weigh in here for one last time and reiterate that, or clarify if necessary, that I am in support of the SR suffix on this zone change. I feel like the record is reasonably clear with the proposed, with the recognized policy 8.1 or action 8.1, although it's not recognized, I'm sorry, it's not adopted. It is recognized. I see nothing to counter that. To me, that record is clear. It, I guess I'll leave it there.
Okay. And I have myself in the queue, but Steve, go ahead.
Well, I just, in listening to the discussion, I think one of the things to kind of, from our standpoint, at least, our recommendation is, is to think really first with policy eight and 8.1 is kind of the, the key part of the conversation. I've heard a lot of other policies that have been pulled out from the, the plan, other discussions. And while those may have some relevance, I think it's really not going to be at the center of, of kind of ultimately your findings, regardless of which way you go, that I think is going to be critical. If, if what we had in front of us, if 8.1 was a policy, just pure adopted policy as, as it stands, I don't think we'd be having to wrestle with this very much. The, the issue that you're wrestling was, is the fact that, for whatever reason, the council did not accept those proposed actions as part of the ordinance. And so they don't have the standing, in essence, that the policies do. And that's what gives some weakness to this discussion. So given the language that's there, how do you support some of the policy intention that's behind eight, as well as what meaning you give to 8.1? And I think Commissioner Jaworski, I think, started off the conversation, I think, in, in, at least what we would see is, is a real productive way to think about this is, so what are the other elements that help bolster kind of that ability to consider site review, knowing that maybe it doesn't have the kind of legal adopted standing that you'd like it to have or, or that it could have? What other elements help support that nonetheless? And I think, I heard a few key things from Commissioner Jaworski that I thought were, were kind of more along the lines of the kinds of findings that you really want to wrestle with. I can offer those up if you want at some point. But I think that's, to me, what we would suggest you wrestle with is, are those the kind of things that you feel give you enough justification to support site review?
And I guess to kind of tag on to that, what I was going to get back to is, again, in the Willaquenzi area plan, it is pretty specific on policies and the proposed actions. I, I think it's pretty specific as far as the compatibility issues and even that proposed action of applying it where medium-density is adjacent to low-density residential as a further insurance that the compatibility is there. And I guess that's where I really don't have quite the same struggle with applying site review in this instance. Because of that, it's, it's there in the plan and, you know, council isn't going to go through and take every parcel specifically upfront to whether, determine whether that needs site review or not. There, it's going to happen as we often do at the zone change aspect. And so that's, that's how I'm, you know, getting toward that idea of just applying the site review in this instance and, and believing that the hearings official erred by not taking it that next step. So I have Commissioner Jaworski, Borowski, and Belcher. And then can we, because it's sounding like we're, we're kind of all, I think, pretty much in agreement. And so I'd like to maybe get to a point of, of seeing if we can come to resolution on this. So Jaworski, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to get back to, it's clear that the council adopted the plan. It's clear that, that they didn't adopt specific action items. But to me, when you adopt a plan, you adopt, well, what was the intent of that plan? And the reason I cited other policies, it's fairly clear to me, based on all the other policies in subarea Harlow and this subarea, that subarea, that their intent was for site review to be applied in those specific cases. And so the city council never said, "We don't adopt the intent of this plan." They adopted that. They just didn't adopt specific action items because, let's be honest, they may have related to costing lots of money. let's be honest, they may have related to costing lots of money or capital improvements. Who knows what the specific actions are? So, I can understand that. But they adopted, to me, the intent of this plan, and I think it's clear.
Commissioner Borowski?
Yeah, and I'd like to thank Commissioner Jaworski for the diligence he had in preparing his research. I think that it's our charge to, if we find the hearings official has erred, to substantiate why. And I think that the stronger, the more evidence that we have going for that, the more chance we have it as to being upheld. So, in that light, I think that I would rule that he erred and citing policy eight and 8.1 as our main one. But then getting to lower substantiating things, citing the two cases that were brought before, and what Commissioner Jaworski brought up, the fact that the difference in the parcels, you know, the adjacent to R1 that were cited, that he cited, I'm taking him for faith on that because I haven't read those policies, but I believe that that probably is the case. And then also the differences that he cited in site review and the multifamily standards. I think that if we go forward with those and our findings, I think we have a fairly strong case to present that in this instance, the hearings official, we feel that he didn't come to the correct decision. So, that's how I would like our thing to be worded. I would take direction from staff to see if there's other things that we should put in there, but I think those are significant evidence to support the error.
Commissioner Belcher?
Well, while I understand that the city council didn't specifically say add areas in the Willackensie area plan that are adjacent to medium-density or high-density property to the site review requirements, they also didn't remove it from the document. And if they really found that not to be a policy they could support, would they not have voted to strike it from the Willackensie area plan? I'm asking staff what they think of that.
There's nothing in the record to help answer that question.
Right. But I'm just saying there's a balance here. They didn't take it out. They didn't put it into the code. So, I still support the idea of applying site review.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah. I support the requirement for site review. And I want to make a general observation because I was involved in developing the Western University area plan, which was Western University Neighborhood Area Plan, which was just a general observation about...
Will this be pertinent to our discussion?
Yeah. And when plans were adopted in the 80s and the 90s, you took a very small amount, because otherwise the code would be gigantic.
Is this...
Just a little leeway and just kind of rational.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure we're not...
Yeah, the code would be gigantic if you adopted everything from each refinement plan into the land use document because there's so much stuff there. So, you made lots of, you know, neighborhoods sometimes weren't happy with it, but basically you shrunk it down to, you know, a half a dozen or a dozen bullet points, and that's really all you... If you look in our land use code, you see like a dozen bullet points for a typical refinement plan. That's it. There was a lot more stuff there, but obviously that level of detail was felt. It wasn't appropriate to actually include in chapter nine or whatever chapter it was at that point in time, although, because the code would become three times its size.
Okay. And I have Commissioner Belcher in the queue. I'm looking for a motion also.
Okay, I'll make a motion afterwards. Some of the arguments we've had in this deliberation said, "Refinement plan is refinement of the metro plan. It rules unless it conflicts with the metro plan." I don't think this conflicts with the metro plan, therefore, even though it's not in the code, by reference, it is, as I understand it, in the metro plan. So, therefore, I move we apply site review to the zone change for this property.
There are second? Commissioner Mills, seconds. And do we need to add reasons and that? I know, I think Commissioner Borowski was outlining some of the thoughts there. Steve?
So, let me just highlight what I heard in terms of kind of the reasons for your potential support of this, at least for the motion. You have policy eight and 8.1 that are kind of the foundation you're working from, which is what I heard you say, and that in addition to just the language and the legal kind of weight those carry, there are additional factors you feel help support the imposition of site review, partly through those policies, which include the uniqueness of this site in comparison to the other sites that, where site review was rejected. So, that's one area. That site review criteria basically address a wider range of issues than multifamily standards do, is a second. I also heard a couple other things that I want to try to put on the table. One was that, in addition, there was nothing that you found in the record that helped answer the question that multifamily standards entirely replace the need for site review, which kind of leads to that other issue of the site review covering a wider range of issues. And then a fourth one that I heard was really kind of bolstering the argument that while the proposed action, 8.1, is not kind of legally adopted in the same sense as the policies, it helps provide direction as far as the intent of eight is concerned, that it helps answer the question of kind of the intent of the council by identifying that proposed action. So, in essence, it helps in some of this legislative history to show what, how you can implement policy eight. I know I didn't say that very eloquently, but if that makes sense. So, I heard those four themes.
Okay.
And just to add to the last point that you made, I think what Commissioner Belcher said about it not being excluded when it was adopted may help also bolster that. You know, if you're looking for legislative intent, which we have very little of as far as written or oral testimony of the city council, we do have the fact that it made it into the document as a proposal, and it wasn't stricken from the document. So, that may also help bolster point four that you had.
Nor does it conflict with metro.
Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, I also think, as Steve has indicated, that policy eight is reinforced in other areas through other policies to show that intent because it was consistent in sub-area and other areas to say they're thinking along those same lines repeatedly.
Are we ready to vote? Commissioner Duncan?
I'm really torn on this because, deep down, I believe site review is the correct thing. I guess I don't see that this document, from a policy standpoint, is as strong as we typically like it to be. There are other comments in this thing under the definition of proposed actions, which says, "Are recognized but not adopted by the city council as proposed ways to carry out policies." I can go with site review if that's appropriate. I'm not sure that we're there on the findings unless maybe I just haven't absorbed it all. You guys hear it a lot stronger than I do to make it sort of Luba-proof, as we'd like to try to do to everything.
Don't ask us that on this one.
I think that applies here.
No, I mean, I think that was, the point we've tried to make here is, we know that there's an argument on either side of this. It's not a slam dunk, and as I said, if this, if 8.1 was a policy, it would be a much easier one to support. The fact that it isn't means you've got to support it through other means. You've got to look deeper into the plan and find other ways to help provide and bolster basically that intent. We heard, the themes I just cited to you were things I heard from several different commissioners that I think can help. I have no idea how that will fare if it's appealed, but I, and I don't think that our city attorney could probably answer it any more definitively either, but it helps to provide some logic behind that, that I think are reasonable kinds of findings. Are they enough? I don't know.
I'm going to just throw something in here.
Okay.
Because I agree that we're not in a place where we can really tell you that we're going to live proof of it. But if you're wanting to impose site review, it would be helpful to have at least a brief discussion about 9.4410. It talks about the applicability of the SR overlay zone, where it says it applies to all property where site review is indicated in the overlay zone map and where site review overlay zone may be required by a refinement plan. So, if you could just have some discussion that explains why you think that, where you can make that tie-in, that'd be helpful.
Okay. I have, well, we're kind of refining the motion with findings, and then my thought would be to go back to Commissioners Belcher and Mills to see if they're okay with that in their motion. And second, before we vote, is that acceptable then? And I guess, maybe Jeff, before you jump in, I had kind of put myself in the queue, and I guess I just wanted to make a comment that regarding the Luba-proofing and that, yes, from my perspective, yes, I'd like to try and get there, but I recognize that we've got to make our decisions based on what we have here. And regardless of whether I think it's going to be appealed or not, I think I have to make my decision based on the evidence that I see here to the best of my ability, based on what I know about this. And that's how I'm making my decision. And whether it gets appealed or not, or upheld or not, that's how I have to do that. And if it gets overturned, then I recognize that then maybe I've missed the mark on that. But I think at this point, I have to make my decision based on what I see in the record and in the policies. Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I've got two things. No, Commissioner Randall. The first is that regarding the Luba-proof goal, which we always try to achieve here, I feel like there's a little bit higher goal here right now. We're trying to do the right thing. We're trying to find the correct way to go in terms of intent and what the city wants and what the neighborhood, what the Willackensie area plan is aiming at, and where it's not in conflict, where the metro plan, which I don't believe it is. So, I think that I'm willing to be a little less than completely Luba-proof here to try to make sure I do the right thing. If I'm going to take a site review out of this thing, I guess I'm going to let Luba do that to me. I'm not going to take it out. So, to me, a site review stays in. Second thing is, I guess I wanted to start the discussion that a city councillor has mentioned about 9.44.1... 9.4410, which I believe is triggered by the action 8.1 in the Willackensie area plan, is a good citation to bring that into play.
Okay. And Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I just wanted to agree with Commissioner Randall. I think we should really focus on making the right decision and leave it up to staff to write up findings or, you know, wordcraft findings that, with our guidance, you know, our suggestions, but leave it up to them. And, you know, in terms of Luba, it's really going to be up to the parties involved and their attorneys arguing whether things pass or, you know, whether they're successful or not. And it's really not, all we're doing is our due diligence here. And I think those kind of decisions really are going to be made later on by, if the parties decide to appeal, we haven't any control over that. Whether we made a decision that's completely rock-solid and completely defensible without any questions, it could still be appealed by the parties, and we have any control over that. And how that's argued is, again, completely out of our bailiwick, except maybe the city, city may be asked to, you know, represent their position, but very often it's, they forego that and let one of the other attorneys argue in their stead. So, again, I don't really think we should focus on that.
Okay. And I have myself in the queue, then Commissioner Belcher. And I believe we will have 15 to 20 minutes or so in our September 30th meeting, I think, for the final order to just review that before it goes forward. Is that correct?
Right. What we would do is get that to you as early as we can, which probably won't be till later this week. And what you would all need to do is make sure that you read those findings carefully. Make sure if you have any specific wording changes, you come prepared with actual specific line item changes that we would need to make. We have to adopt that basically with those changes that day on the 30th.
Okay. And then the second item that I had is, I just wanted to maybe reread, just for the sake of the record, 9.4410 related to site review, just so that we all know exactly what that says as we've entered into this discussion as an additional finding. It says applicability. The SR overlay zone applies to all property where SR is indicated on the Eugene overlay zone map. In addition, the SR overlay zone may be required by a refinement plan. Applications for development permits shall not be accepted by the city for development in a SR overlay zone until the site review plan is approved according to the site review procedures in this land use code. The provisions of the SR overlay zone supplement those of the applicable base zone or special area zone. Where the overlay zone and base zone or special area zone provisions conflict, the more restrictive requirement applies. And I think that kind of gets at what our discussion has been. And I thank the city attorney for that additional suggestion as far as part of the findings as we've gone through this because I think, and I want to thank Commissioner Jaworski for doing the research on that too, because I think from my perspective, that really gets at, you know, solidifying that decision. Commissioner Belcher?
Well, thanks again to Commissioner Jaworski and to Commissioner Baker for the hard work that you did in preparing for this. I don't think our goal is to preserve our win-loss record at Luba. Our goal is to make good decisions. Having said that, on the other hand, if Luba remands it, we didn't make that decision. So, I think we're making the right decision. I think we've heard sufficient criteria for making that decision, especially when you take into account that Luba looks at whether we've made a reasonable decision. And I believe we have.
So, with that then, I'll ask if Commissioners Belcher and Mills are amenable, I guess, to the findings related to policy eight and proposed action 8.1 that Steve had mentioned earlier, the two cases and the uniqueness of those two cases in the record and how they differ in not applying site review from this particular instance, the site review versus multifamily standards, and the differences that Commissioner Jaworski pointed out there, as well as that the multifamilies, multifamily standards do not repeal or negate the need for site review, as well as the addition of 9.4410, the site review overlay standards. So, Commissioner Belcher, is that accurate?
I think we also mentioned the fact that council didn't remove this policy from...
The council didn't remove the policy?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I'm a little concerned about what those might set for precedence for others, but I'm okay with it.
Okay. Commissioner Mills?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of believing that the hearings official erred in not applying site review based on what we've just discussed and on the motion signified by saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
And those who feel opposed, nay? Motion carries. Okay. The next items we have really may be already taken care of, but I want to make sure that we've covered those. And I guess Harlow Sub Area 4, I'll open up discussion on that. And do we need to discuss that? Is it, or do you believe it's taken care of in what we've already done? Okay. Commissioner Jaworski?
I was under the impression that when we took our vote the first time, we addressed this particular issue, although I couldn't relate the tax lots identified there to 101 and the others. I got confused, but I still thought that our vote addressed this particular issue.
And I think there was some question perhaps in that is why we wanted to revisit that, just to see if we were all in agreement that our original discussion addressed this or not. Commissioner Belcher?
Well, it seems to me that the ordinance that adopted the metro plan amendments for this area plan basically added back Lot 101 into this list of lots, but it wasn't done in the area, in the plan itself. So, if staff is comfortable that the metro plan refinements are sufficient to indicate that 101 should be medium-density, I guess we're not going to go back and change the Willackensie area plan... area plan at this late date. I guess I'm just looking for affirmation from staff.
Yeah, I think we're comfortable with it. I think the key thing to remember is the policy talks about considering the low density designation. That information was in front of the council as they made their decision about what to do with these parcels. Most of them were re-designated, one wasn't. So in our eyes, it was considered by the city council as part of that deliberation. So we think you did address it, you know, through your other discussions already, but just want to make sure that this was, everyone's satisfied with that.
We didn't want to leave anything hanging. Okay. Any, Commissioner Baker?
Well, I'm confused. We're talking about 2D now?
4A, 41 in the subarea.
As far as assignments of errors?
Oh, subassignments, excuse me.
They were listed in the agenda item summary.
Sorry, my error.
No, 2B.
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 2B, okay.
Yeah, this would be subassignment 2B.
Okay, okay. I was just getting confused because I thought it was 2E, because you said, oh, because, oh, subarea policy four. Okay, right, all right.
Are we comfortable with our decision related to that? Okay? And I don't think that needs a motion or anything, so, okay. Next one would be Willaquenz area plan, I'll make sure I've got my notes right here. Residential policy one, and that is maintain the existing low density residential character of existing Willaquenz neighborhoods while recognizing the need to provide housing for all income groups in the city. And I believe that gets at subassignment 2C. And I guess I'll ask, is the fact that we allowed the medium density residential as the appropriate designation for this property, make that moot? Okay.
That's correct, Chair.
Okay.
That's our review of your action.
Again, want to make sure we don't leave anything untied or unconnected.
This section, because different commissioners had asked questions.
Okay.
So we just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
Just a comment on that, if you look at page 16, number two, in the Willaquenz area plan, use the draft that was in the record, because I don't actually have the final copy. It actually talks about setting a minimum density requirements for medium, high density and I want to note that it sets a minimum density requirements of 10 dwell units per acre for medium density and 15 for high density. So, you know, they, and they were recommending that the city establish minimum densities in these other zones, because I think they were obviously concerned that people weren't building out these zones at a density that they thought was reasonable. So they actually proposed setting some minimum values. So again, I think, I think it's also useful to note that the densities that they were proposing too, just so that we know that that was what was the intent at the time, so.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments on residential policy one? Okay. Then land use policies three and six, and I'll group those just because they're on the same page, which I think gets at subassignments 2D and 2E. And that's related to significant vegetation and then minimizing land use conflicts by promoting compatibility. And I'll jump into the queue here, feeling that this actually, I think, furthers the idea of site review as a compatibility issue. So I don't know if we can go back and add that as a finding or not, but I think it just reinforces our direction on site review. Any other comments? Okay. Oh, yeah. Commissioner Baker?
Well, I'll add it here, in any case, just that often when you do a, this is a zone change application, and often, I should say, it has happened in the past and it's also adopted by city ordinance, and I'm familiar with it from my own neighborhood, that very often when we do zone changes, we actually provide other provisions, height limits or density limits. In other words, we limit the maximum density that could be built there or we limited the maximum height of the building. And I would say normally I wouldn't, you know, necessarily recommend that we look at those, but I think the problem, really the problem with this property is it affects so many residential properties around it. Very often when you have a zone change, you've got two properties on either side and maybe one property behind. That would be the maximum, but very often it's just, all you're really affecting is there's a transition between one zone and another, so there's really only one other property affected, but because of the geometry of this particular site, there are lots of properties that surround it that it has an impact on, sort of like the worst case, really. And so just that, you know, one could take these issues to, you know, adopt additional requirements. You know, we've got a VIN item where we're setting, we're gonna look at applying in the future, you know, variable setbacks based on the wall area. You know, we've agreed that we want to do that and look at that. So again, we could, you know, look at doing that or a density limitation if we felt that was needed, or a height limitation if we felt that would be, meet the criteria here to provide better buffering between low density and high density. And I just want to mention that, because, you know, this is where that would happen if we were going to, you know.
Commissioner Jaworski?
I understand what Commissioner Baker is saying, but where I'm confused is I don't know what the applicant intends here, although it might be medium density, they might build all single family residents, they may not build multifamily and not come under those standards. So if they did come under multifamily, I think it addresses, if they built multifamily in their plan, then I think it would, in the future, it would address what Commissioner Baker is talking about, to the extent we haven't updated that yet with new Division Eugene type activities. So, and if they built single family residential, then it might be, except for the density, fall under site review and be also compatible. So I don't know what we can do here in addition, is what I'm saying, based on not knowing what they're going to do.
And I guess I would jump in, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I would jump in and say that, to me, it seems like with the multifamily standards that now also have site review, I believe we've adequately provided protection for the adjacent properties. And without getting into specifically crafting a site-specific set of criteria without having anything before us, I guess I'm comfortable believing that the site review process will work. But, yeah, Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, and I feel, I feel, I feel, I feel comfortable with that, but I was just, again, as I, you know, and I know from my own experience in the developments in the neighborhood I live in and other neighborhoods I'm familiar with, that very often we do craft these things to add some other criteria. In other words, if you said, set a density limit on multifamily, even if they built single family, it wouldn't apply, because they wouldn't get up to that density. In other words, you know, if you're looking at, you know, what we have at medium density is a range and it's not unusual that you could set the range not at the maximum, but somewhere, you know, somewhere down from the maximum, if you felt that would help for compatibility. It could be very, could very well be that site review will take care of all these things, but it's just a way of sort of crafting, you know, a zone change so that you kind of more guarantee the outcome that you want. For example, it appears that access will be awkward from this site for a large number of units, somewhat awkward, given that these streets it comes in on is, you know, and so that would be justification where you might provide a density overlay that would mean that you wouldn't build it out to the very maximum that would be allowed by our current programs.
So are you saying you think he erred?
Pardon?
I mean, we're asking whether or not, I guess my question is, do you think the hearings, that's enough evidence to define a finding of erd? Because that's what we're deciding here.
Yeah, and I think, was that, I guess, was that any of the subassignments of error that we're dealing with? Because I think we need to focus in on just what came before us in the appeal.
Well, we're also proposing that we're gonna be adopting that this zone change will go through with an SR. I mean, we are also making, I mean, we're not just saying that the hearings officer was wrong. We are gonna adopt this, is that, am I?
No, you actually, you found that he erred in not applying the site review.
Right, so we're gonna apply the site review. So again, we're not just, you know, being, providing the judicial function, we're actually providing some other function aside from just a judicial. Because we could decide that he erred and we, you know, we don't decide what we do, but we're gonna apply to SR.
I think the question might be better captured in determining whether he erred in not going further than simply applying a site review overlay and should there have been additional conditions or limits as argued by the opponents? So I mean, I think that's really the question here and sort of finally wrapping up, you know, the larger question. Did he err in not going further in terms of applying site review without specific limits, for example, on density or height?
Okay. Do we feel that the hearings official erred by not going farther? Commissioner Borowski?
At this point, I would feel uncomfortable doing that, because I have heard really no justification, such as we had in the last one. You know, we had, we had 8.1, 8.2. You know, the justification that the applicant, you know, provided to me wasn't strong enough to do that and so I would have problems going that extra mile on this thing, not hearing any other justifications.
Other thoughts? Commissioner Belcher?
Well, I think by imposing site review, we gave there, we provided an opportunity for those types of questions to be resolved at that time.
So with that, I think we've covered all the items that were before us and so we need to have, I believe, a motion, kind of an all-inclusive motion.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, so we went through and we did key questions, right? And I'm just reviewing back, so.
Sure.
Key question twos, did we go over that? I mean, I know that basically what we did, did key question two, which was the ordinance eight, basically eight, 1988855. I just, when we did that the other day, were we doing key question two? Were we doing key question three? Were we doing key question one?
Go ahead.
Last Monday, you handled a question of subassignment 1A. Matter of fact, we addressed 1A. I guess finding that the parcel VIN doesn't include MDR and no columns is appropriate for the zone change. Because so many of the subassignments.
Hinged on.
Three, related to whether it was designated MDR or LDR, depending on the medium density LDR. We effectively resolved all of those.
Right.
And today, the focus was primarily on what was covered in this key question two, did he err in not making findings for Willaquenz area plan? And we said yes, and therefore adopted SR.
And the reason that I brought that up, I mean, we just went through and went through all the subassignments on the other one and I wasn't clear whether or not we were going to go through all the subassignments here and if we were, or whether we were or we weren't, I just wanted it to be on the record that, that all, in my view, all of the subassignments under key question number two, 3A, 3B, 3C, all of those, for me, hinged on the fact of it was the question that I asked council before. What was it zoned after 19855? And, and so I just, in coming to these findings, you know, if we were gonna go through all of those, that's where the decision point was and it was unclear and it would have been, the reason that our findings were, was because we use the legislative history. But to me, number one, you know, doing it, number one, I mean, it addresses all of those, but yet if we're answering these things, the reason being refers back to that. And, and as far as the applicant goes, you know, it's, the reason why is it, there was no clear representation as to what the parcel was zoned, because in my mind, if there was, if it said it was zoned this way, if it was zoned low after 19855, then all of these do come into play, right? The second ordinance is moot, the county one is moot, so, so that, I just wasn't sure how, you know, because we went through and answered all of those, so.
Commissioner Baker?
Well, the only thing, you know, when I read this, the first sentence says rely on the metro plan as controlling document and therefore not to provide further findings in regard to the WAP. The problem with that is we are providing further findings to the WAP in other places, so I don't think that we, you know, what we really did was, you know, we dealt with the metro plan and the zoning, the first part of that sentence, but not the second part, because we are, we are providing further findings in regard to the WAP that we think that the hearings official erred or neglected or whatever. So, you know, it's a little confusing and, you know, and then you would have to look at these and I think staff will do that, to look at these and craft something that will be reasonable, given, you know, 3M or whatever, you know what I'm saying? Because some of these may be moot and some of these may be related to the WAP that we're using elsewhere and we'll obviously have some privilege to say that.
Steve?
So, yes, based on what we've heard today, what you would be doing and what motion probably needs to come on the table is one that would affirm the hearings official in part and modify portion of his decision. The part you're modifying is what you just mentioned about the WAP policies and its support for site review. So yes, you've affirmed the hearings official in terms of the designation of, and the rezone to R2, but you've modified his decision in respect to his findings, not to go to the refinement policies you have and those supplemental findings that you articulated a few minutes ago would be part of those supplemental findings we bring back to you.
So can, can the motion be that simple from the standpoint of affirming the MDR and R2 zone and believing that the hearings official erred related to the items that we did on site review that we listed out earlier and not address each of the subassignments individually, but to do that in a, maybe a little simpler?
Through your votes and your other actions, we have that direction, so you can just refer to that in this main motion, that you basically are upholding the hearings official's decision in respect to the MDR designation and providing supplemental findings with respect to the WAP policies and imposition of site review as you've described.
Okay. Can, can we have a motion to that effect?
You can take that and move it if you want.
I move staff's motion.
Okay.
What he said, right?
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes.
At this point, I would just like to say thank you to everybody involved here, staff, the applicants, the, you know, everybody involved. I know this was a, was a difficult thing and there was a lot of time and energy put into it and I appreciate all the work and everything that was done on, on all sides to help us reach this conclusion. help us reach these conclusions.
Thank you. Commissioner Jaworski?
Related but unrelated, are we, am I bringing from this that when people are drafting area plans, that they address formatting and put everything in a policy and no action plans? Is that the safest way to go?
The main intent is be clear what your intentions are.
Yeah. Okay. Well, yes. Okay. Commissioner Belcher, then Commissioner Baker?
Well, while I'm tempted to talk about the arguments being enforced and the convolutedness, I won't. However, I do have a question for staff for another discussion. And that is, when I attended OPI, another city attorney spoke, and at that point, he made the comment that my role is to defend the decisions made by the hearings official or the city council. I would like us aid to get back to the bin, and one of those items, I would like to be a discussion from the city attorney about what their role is relative to defending the decision by a body or a hearings official as the process moves forward, relative to how they feel about that decision. Because I'm sometimes wondering, am I hearing this because this is what the hearings official said and the city attorney's role is to defend the hearings official, or am I hearing this because that's truly what the hearings official...
Are you talking to local appeal, just, local appeal from the hearings officer to you?
Yes. I'm wondering what you view your role as relative to defending positions. But I don't want it now. I'd like to have that discussion later.
Commissioner Baker?
Oh, no. I think I'll pass. I was just going to elaborate on the question that, about refinement plans, and the goal is to get in as much from the refinement plan into the adopted policies. That's really the goal, and it's generally, you know, they will only want to use a certain number of bullet points, and then you're stuck, so.
Okay. Any other items from staff? Other items from commission? Yes, Commissioner Borowski?
Well, I think that, for me, this is a, this is a perfect segue into something that we have coming up. When we're doing, when we're talking about, what we're going to be talking about next week, the code amendments on the single-family, R1 things, and the fact that there's, there possibly will be, you know, areas that are excluded until a refinement plan can be put in, I would hope that when, when you guys are trying to craft those refinement plans, you know, for South University, Amazon, Fairmont neighbors, that we take this discussion that we just had about sub-policies, because that is definitely where I think they will be used. I mean, you're, we're talking real-world stuff here, you know, not, it's not five years down the road when it's going to get implemented. As soon as that, as those smaller plans get implemented, you know, so let's make sure that when those, when staff gets around to starting to do those refinement plans, that they're not policy recommendations, they're policies.
Commissioner Belcher, then Commissioner Duncan, then Commissioner Baker?
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that there are area plans coming up for River Road and Santa Clara as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Duncan?
And I might suggest that as little as refinement plans are written, that they have to be also working well into the future, because what we might want today can change. Some of our plans are now 25 or 30 years old, and if we decide what we want today, it may change, so they still have to be flexible enough to make those changes over time, because we won't come back and rewrite them for another 25 or 30 years probably, or if ever.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I think our deliberations that they point out the same thing that we come to all the time. We have issues with compatibility between zones, which we really haven't dealt with yet in the zoning code, and we really need to deal with that because it would minimize, it would reduce the friction in a lot of cases and make these things go away if we had better, you know, we had in the code better compatibility between adjacent zones.
So I think we're adjourned, and then I think we have someone who'd like to speak. So, we're adjourned. Yes?
Okay. This is my first time.